I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of December 5th, 2019, to order and ask Clerk Simmski to roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here: Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
And Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to the meeting. And the first item is open forum. If there's anybody here who has, wants to discuss an item with the board that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing none, I'll close open forum, move on to reports. One of the things we've been doing leading up to the 100th anniversary, which is in 2021, is that we've had a set of murals done, deplitting Westmont through the years. And we're asking for the public to give us, right there, what does the future of Westmont look like to you? So we're calling out anybody from the public who'd like to share that with us, because the last mural is going to be the future. So the artist is looking for different thoughts and ideas. So please, share that with us. And on the 100th anniversary, the committee has been working on different events and activities. I think we're going to try to celebrate the 100th the entire year, take the activities we have and maybe enhance them a little bit more. So we're looking forward to that. And that's all I have. I'll... Clerk Simmski.
I just have a couple of information items. The village clerk's office will be, or all the village offices will be closed, December 24th and 25th, and January 1st for the holidays. Westmont Holidays Winter Ball. The time to RSVP has been extended to attend the Westmont Holidays Winter Ball on December 13th at our Hilton Resort. Details and online reservations can be made at westmontchamber.com. And that's basically all I had. I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving.
And we do have one more meeting before the holidays.
Yes, we do.
And that's two weeks from tonight. All right, Trustee Addington.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just a couple of things. First one is that my committee will be meeting, which is community development. We won't meet for a year. We'll meet on January 16th of 2020. And so it'll be in the new year. And the other thing is that because of holidays and other things, mayors and managers decided to meet Tuesday morning instead of the 4th Tuesday in November and December. So it was a combined meeting. It was a good meeting. A lot of things to report. There's a report in everyone's desk so they can go over. First one is that our consultant, Matt O'Shea, who's our lobbyist, he thought the veto session went pretty well. There were some cleanup things that were done. Most of it had to do, a lot of the cleanup had to do with the Cannabis Act. And one of the things that came out of the cleanup was that if a community is given, or somebody's given a permit in that community, sales tax is going to be collected. However, the special excise tax apparently is not going into effect until no earlier than July of next year. If you haven't opted in or out yet, it might even be later than that. But that was one of the things that was done in the cleanup bill. So even those communities that have an idea that they may get, I think there's one that has already a medical facility in their town, so they're pretty sure they're getting one, but they're not going to see the excess tax for six months.
The local tax.
The local tax, yeah. And the other thing that came out of the cleanup bill was that you can still, as a community, if you have a place where you allow, like the Humidor, you can opt out of allowing them to let people smoke marijuana inside that facility, as was said. But again, it would take specific action by this board to do that.
Right now, the way it's written, they can't smoke or can't have cannabis inside, right?
Except Humidor.
Oh.
Because they allow smoking. Now, John, you're kind of shaking it.
Is it just tobacco?
Well, I, from what I had read, and I'll check into it, I thought it was a good idea for municipalities to proactively, where dispensaries were to be allowed to proactively prohibit smoking in dispensaries or in lounges, which were dedicated smoking lounges.
Right.
And Huka is a cigar retailer with a smoking lounge. I don't know if that applies, because on the other hand, the act prohibits smoking in all public places, which would include restaurants and retail establishments. So I'm not sure it fits into Huka, but it's something I think we should consider, whether we need to address it proactively and say, no smoking indoors is allowed, or smoke, you know, in certain...
Any consumption.
Any consumption, right?
Yeah.
I do think it's somewhat of a unique idea, because you see California is going this way now, where they're having diners, they're having, you know, private clubs where it is allowed. So it's interesting to see that, you know, that there is that possibility. You know, I think when people's mindsets change and start treating it like alcohol, that, you know, what would be the difference at Humidor if a guy had a cigar? Or, let's not say Humidor, let's not label them, but Steve Smoke Shop, let's say, okay? What if he allows cannabis? And that was what that club's for.
Yeah.
So again, it's legal, it's not illegal. So interesting, just to...
Again, maybe you can look into that and report back. The other thing I thought was interesting is that there's now a warning from some of the sheriffs in Wisconsin telling LNI, telling their residents, don't go across an LNI after January 1st and bring it back. We're going to get you. What's interesting is LNI sheriffs have been saying that for years, for LNI residents going across to buy fireworks.
Yeah.
So now it's reversed itself a little bit. He also reported that he thought there were going to be three big things in the spring session. It's a election year. We're going to hear a whole bunch about property tax relief. And there's a big push on, and I know our own state rep Diane Lazzaki is involved with this, ethics. There's going to be a big push on to put some real good ethics rules in that have never really been there before. The other thing that he said definitely is going to be on the agenda because Governor Pritzker wants it, is the sports betting bill, which some people are predicting could be rival Las Vegas as far as revenue goes. So again, that's something that we'll just wait until spring session is there. The other thing, and I mentioned this to Manager May Tuesday after the meeting, Rora brought up that there's going to be some kind of an administrative rule where they want to transfer the approval of these water lines and especially fire hydrants from the IEPH to the Department of Public Health, because they don't want any lines to go more than 10 feet. And I know, Steve, you said you were...
We talked about it a little bit this morning. It was more of the, I'm going to describe the same concern differently, but the EPA is, or maybe it was the IDPH, but somebody's doing their own rulemaking without going through legislatively.
It's a process.
And it had to do with dead ends bigger than, yeah. Dead ends bigger than 10 feet. And then, so when you've got these fire hydrant stubs with stagnant water sitting in the fire hydrant service, that was the concern and...
It was driving us as legionella. Obviously, that's the thing that's driving us, driving the buffs. IDPH is proposing all these without going through legislative, and actually, they're enforcing it. They have inspectors that have gone out and shut down water main projects with really no authority. And it happened in La Grange Park, it's happened in Olmhurst. We're going to, you're going to be seeing in this next few months, we're going to propose to do a water main project on North Washington. And so our next Public Works Committee meeting, we're going to have a, an ordinance that John's working on about how to handle the lead issue. That's another part of this equation. But right now, what they're doing is IDPH is, they're pushing their authority, which they really don't have any, and the EPA is kind of backing off and saying, okay, fine. So it's always been, we've put in a permit, a plumbing permit, to do a construction project, a water main project. The EPA has always signed off on it 100%. You know, fire hydrants, valves, water main. Now, what they're saying is, no, we're not going to sign off on it anymore. All we're going to sign off on is a water main. The IDPH and the plumbers' union is pushing for that they're considering hydrants, valves, all of that is plumbing, and that they should be authority on that. And we're saying, no, it should be the EPA. It's always been that way. Why are you stepping in and doing that? They did the same thing with the backflow devices back 35 years ago. So they're trying to, the plumbers' union is really pushing for this. And you know, our governor's very pro-union, which is fine. But we're, our big fear, and we've been lobbying, we've been going down to Springfield, I've been down to Springfield twice about this, is that we're trying to get a little more control over it and saying that fire hydrants and valves and all that are not plumbing. You know, plumbing is considered inside the building, not on the outside of the building. So that's our big argument. And right now, it's, you know, we're going back and forth, and we're going to see who's going to win. But that's what they're pushing for. They're trying to get fire hydrants and everything. They don't want to leave more than five feet away from the fire, from the water main. So what that means is, if you have a water main that's on the edge of the road, and you have to, you know, you have to go within five feet, well, you're going to be sometimes in the lane of traffic, you know? So how are you going to handle that? If the water main's in the middle of a road, how are you going to get a fire hydrant far enough away? But they're using legionella as their justification for why they're pushing for this. And, you know, and to be honest with you, the Legionnaires' disease that's happened in Illinois, it's, nothing's been proven from a fire hydrant. It's been proven from other, you know, if you know anything about it, it's airborne disease. It's from, you know, water not being flushed out, like hospitals and other things that need to be taken care of. So maintenance is what needs to be done. So if they want us to do a better job maintaining our fire hydrants, fine. We'll flush our hydrants more often.
Yeah.
That's not a problem. But to ask us to do what they're asking us is really unreasonable.
And just to be clear, when he says EPA, he means Illinois EPA now?
Yeah, Illinois EPA.
Not federal.
Yes. Illinois is the only state that's pushing this, by the way, right now.
There is a administrative 120-day stop on things like this. And I believe mayors and managers, we recommended a legislative committee, and I think probably the board of directors went forward and said...
This morning, yeah.
That we supported that, to stop it for 120 days, give us all a chance to figure this thing out. The other thing of import to all of you is that there were five nominations for folks for Government Leader of the Year. It's something that mayors and managers does every year. And we, here in Westmont, nominated Mayor Frank Trilla because of the leadership he showed in the synergatics. And Frank was the one that was chosen. So that'll be, that'll be presented at the Legislative Dinner, which is January 15th. And then the other thing is that there was some real concerns with regard to villages that were operating parking garages and/or parking lots that they didn't own, that the only Department of Revenue was going to start collecting a fee for each unit. And Department of Revenue has now issued a ruling that's cleared all that up. If we're running it, even if it's across the street where Metro owns the lot, it's, it no longer applies. So we're out of that one. And then the last thing was the Legislative Action Program. And again, I think a lot of you know, we've reduced that down to a one-page document these last several years, because we have found from talking with the legislators that they really like that. It doesn't necessarily be able to put everything you want to put in there, but you get the main points in, and it's something they can stick in their pocket and keep. Where in the past, it was a, like that, you know, it was a booklet, and they didn't keep it. And I don't even know if a lot of them read it. So I think this gets a lot more play. So that was forwarded on. And our next meeting now won't be until January 28th. And that's all I have, sir.
Well, thank you. And again, for those who may not probably know it by now, Jim is our appointed, Trustee Addington, appointed legislative person to the Mayors and Managers Committee. And he does a thorough job representing us. So I'm going to ask Trustee Barry to give his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we know, the Holidays Parade was rained out, but we did have our Rotary Annual Ugly Sweater 5K. And we had about, I think, 75 or so at the end, right? Is that where we were, somewhere like that? That we had 75 participants in the bad weather? And it was, it was a fun event, and we looked to grow from there and to have a more successful 5K next year, and then really open it up for the 100th year anniversary. So again, the Rotary 5K Ugly Sweater was a success. That did not get canceled. We did have an Economic Development Committee meeting yesterday. We discussed Quincy Street to possibly go to a limited manufacturing, creating a new zoning ordinance that is not in Westmont, but other communities have as a M1. So there'll be more discussion and future meetings on that. I think a lot of us, and most of us has known, that Quincy Station is well underway. The buildings have been tore down, the construction fence is up, and utilities are starting to be disconnected and so forth. And then we have projects going vertical, as we say, right? Bruce, is that what we say, going vertical? We have, North Cass Townhomes are really taking shape. I know a lot of people are commenting, they're getting the facades done on the front. Market Center at 63rd and Cass is just going gangbusters. Canes actually has their signs up, and we've seen some of the other buildings going up there also. The long-awaited, the old Pizza Hut at Ogden and Cass is now the Taste Greek Street Food. And we also have Las Palmas moving to the old Dunkin' Donuts location there, and they're well underway. The village staff here has really gone out of their way to make that process streamlined and smooth. So thanks to the staff for streamlining that for them. We've also seen our project at Ridge and 63rd, multi-family unit, that that's going forward now. That was at last month's EDC. And our next EDC meeting will be January 8th at 9:00 a.m., right here at the Village Hall. And back to the Taste of Greek Street Food, they are now open for business. And there is also a ribbon cutting scheduled for Raising Canes Chicken Fingers at the New Market Center on January 14th at 9:00 a.m. So I'm going to give you that one more time. It's January 14th at 9:00 a.m. Here becomes the real important part. There will be a drawing for 20 lucky customers who will win free Raising Canes for a year. Okay? Registration is that day from 8:30 to 9:00 a.m. The first 100 customers in line that are 13 years old or older to order a combo of any kind will receive a free T-shirt with a box combo for their next visit. Okay? So again, Nero, January 14th, 9:00 a.m. That's our chance to get Raising Canes for a year. Okay? That's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be February 27th, 2020, 4:30 here at the Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend that meeting. Next, Police Department. Congratulations to the Citizens Police Academy graduates. Yay, great job. I was actually in the first class, so I'm sure things have changed quite a bit. So I wanted to tell them all congratulations. Fire Department. Keep the Wreath Red is a program, it's an annual event aimed at increasing the awareness of safety while decorating our homes for the holidays. Outside both fire stations is a wreath with red lights. The wreath remains lit 24 hours a day during the holiday season. If a fire occurs that is determined to be the result of a holiday decoration, a white bulb replaces a red bulb on the wreath. The hope is the wreath will serve as a constant reminder to practice safety while displaying holiday decorations. And I know that this has been an ongoing program for years. When my dad was the fire chief, they had Keep the Wreath Red. So this has been a really great idea. It makes us all aware of it. So we do not want to see any white bulbs in that wreath. Other than that, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'll turn to this side, and I'll start with Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, the Westmont First Committee will meet on December 16th at 6:00 p.m. It's Monday evening. And again, we'll continue to work on the census. That's going to kick off in a big way right around the corner in January. We're working now to encourage the subgroups to fill out their teams to make this happen for us, so that we get the funding and the representation that we deserve as a community here. So if you're part of that subgroup, please do your homework over the holidays and be ready to go January 1. The Environmental Improvement Committee met on Monday evening, and I won't go into any details, but we need to make greater effort reducing our waste stream. It's critical that we do that for the environment. And Trustee Little will give us a little bit more information on that. At this time, we're also collecting for recycling cooking oil, holiday lights, and then we'll have the same holiday tree recycling program that we had in years past. And then lastly, Richmond Gardens had over 50 pounds of honey this year, and that's available. The proceeds for that go to benefit Richmond Gardens. You can see John Yader here at the Village, or contact our partners in this, the Clardon Hills. They also have honey for sale. That is all.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our Administration-Finance Committee meeting at 4:30 today. We had a presentation by the Environmental Improvement Committee. They did a survey regarding curbside compost feasibility. Obviously, our biodegradable waste contain, it takes up about 22% of all garbage going into landfills. So we have to get that down considerably. In 1990, yard waste was banned from landfills in Illinois. So because of that, our yard waste is picked up differently. And we're going to consider doing a curbside compost, which would include not only your yard waste, but food scraps, so that we can get that out of the landfills too.
Compost collection, not just...
Another collection.
Don't put your compost on the curb.
No, it would be a subscription base, and we'd get new toters. So they would be seasonally or annually rented, and that we would start being able to do that as soon as we get information from the EIC going to Waste Management. Education is going to be important, because there's a lot of information that people are not made aware of initially about what can go into your compost. Same thing with your recycling. You don't understand that where the plastic water bottle that you buy at the grocery store is recyclable, the wrapper around the outside of it is not. So there's a lot more than just intuitive thinking. So in addition to the EIC, we also talked about having our budget meeting for the village. It will be scheduled for April the 16th at 2020. That's right around the corner. And then we also talked about cleaning up the fee structures within the Buildings Department. Moving on, Holidays, where the parade was canceled, we did have activities within Westmont Center. And that was a lot of fun. We had Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, we had Frosty the Snowman. Kids were able to get their pictures taken with them, and they get to see all the decorations inside Westmont Center. We had the high school choral do a wonderful performance. They just really, you know, sing their little hearts out. They were great. We had the junior high school band, they performed up there. And then we also had a magician, our stilt walker, because it was indoors, decided to do his magic act instead of being a stilt walker. So we had a lot of fun. The Fire Department gave away cookies and hot chocolate, and, you know, great thanks to them and their performance there, too. We also have a Holidays Coat Drive, now through January the 4th. If you have any gently-used coats, cats, scarves, gloves, socks, boots, please take them to the library or the Park District. We do have a lot of people in need, so please try to remember them as we get ready for the holidays. And then the Holidays Home and Business Decorating Contest. You can still sign yourself up, or a neighbor, oops, I think it's like through tomorrow, through the village website. We will be judging on Monday. So make sure your lights are on, and we'll have a good time with that. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is December 19th, 4:30, right here in Village Hall. And then next, I know I've talked a lot about it, and so has Mike Ramsey, our Public Works Director, but our operator and training program, we finally have some significant progress. One of Mike's students, Justin Yader, passed the exam and is now an ILEPA Agency Licensed Water Operator in training. But when he graduates, he'll have his Class D Water Operator license. So that's pretty cool stuff. I mean, that's a good paying job, a different avenue. So good work, Mike. That's awesome to hear. And then in the spirit of good service, I just want to let the board know, this week I had two good compliments from our Building Department. Jason and Bruce's team, one was a commercial building, building permit. The other one was a new home, someone coming in. And both of them said really nice things, that they all went above and beyond, and were very happy that that all worked out that way. So don't always hear that. So it's nice to pass on. And that's all I have, sir.
Well, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There just was an email. I'd just like to make a comment real fast.
Go ahead.
A lot of you know that People's Resource Center came to this community about 17 years ago. And one of the people that was very instrumental in that was from the Knights of Columbus. His name was Hank Enzaloni. Hank unfortunately is getting a little bit up there now. He said he's 71, and has decided that he has to step away as the director of the food pantry. Hank's done a phenomenal job at People's Resource Center. He's a local guy, active in the community, active with the Knights, and active with People's Resource Center. He said that first month of operation, they served, it was 12 families. And that's, in October, they served 1,326, which was a new record. He wishes they didn't keep breaking that record. But they are now distributing somewhere around 13,000 pounds of food every week. And that's just out of this location. They have the other one in Wheaton that I think is pretty close to the same. So I hate to see Hank stand away. He's a great, great guy and an asset to this community. But I understand, and we wish him nothing but the best. He's still going to stay on with CRC, but not in the capacity as head of the food pantry. So we wish him nothing but the best in whatever he wants to do in the future. I just wanted to mention that.
No, that's, thank you. Moving on the agenda, we're going to need to hold a public hearing for property tax levy. Before we, I open the hearing, I'm going to turn to Finance Director Parker to give some additional information.
So this is the standard annual process, where we first open it up to the public to be able to talk about it. This is something that's required. If we had a large increase in the levy, over 5%, our increase is just under 5%, so it's not legally required. But the Village Board still wants to make sure the residents have an opportunity to be heard. So this is their opportunity if they'd like to talk in property tax.
And at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody want to comment on the budget?
Not the budget, the tax levy.
The tax levy. Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and move on to items removed from the consent agenda. Manager May.
I don't have anything to be removed.
Oh. Then I'll go ahead and read the consent agenda.
May I tell you something before you start reading it? We did have an error in the minutes, and they have been amended. It said that our next administration meeting was going to be October something. Well, obviously, we meant December. It happened. I'm sorry, but it has been corrected. Just wanted you to know that. So they will be voted on as amended.
As amended in the consent agenda. So the first item is Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held on November 21st, 2019, as amended. Finance Ordinance Number 15, in the aggregate amount of $3,488,949.69. We have three purchase orders this evening. First one is RW Dunhaman Company, $763,700. This represents the construction, corresponds to the construction contract for the CBD LE Section C project. Next purchase order is Critical Technology Solutions, $24,780. This is for a replacement, WAN is the Wide Area Network Links. This is for a replacement—the WAN is the wide-area network links. These are items that were damaged in a storm. It's under the budgeted item. You see it's marked as other, and that's because this isn't specifically budgeted as a replacement, but they were damaged, and we've submitted them for—you know, as a claim as well, for reimbursement by insurance. Third purchase order is Path Construction Company, $34,183, and there were so—this is a—represents a change order for the contaminated materials they had to remove from the public works site in conjunction with the public works facility. The total of those purchase orders was $822,663, and that brings the total of purchase orders with finance ordinance number 15 to $4,311,612.69. Completes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve as read, little.
Second, Addington.
Motion made and second to approve. Comments? Trustee Barry.
Steve, what are WAN inks?
It's a wide-area network. It's like the—
Apology, sorry.
Yeah, it's radio communication.
I had a typo on the agenda left off the L, so it should be—
Links.
Links, not inks. That's what it is.
Good catch.
And this was from that windstorm we had, I'm assuming? And that was crazy.
I think it was a lightning event.
Lightning—it's usually lightning hit or—
Oh, okay.
Don't get IT started on electromagnetic pulses.
And I see that—hopefully, that some of that is reimbursed from insurance as well.
But that's—the idea is being made a claim. We still have to purchase it to replace it. In the event it doesn't qualify or isn't, we will find a way to offset that with other IT purchases.
Yes. I was just—I just wanted to follow up on this path construction, the environmental cost there. While it looks like a big number, that's pretty reasonable to what you can get into. I had one of these projects about a month ago, and it escalated because you don't know what's under there, even though they soil sample all around. You're subject to whatever, and once the environmental people get in there and the EPA gets in there, you do it by the book. It's not about the cost, it's just about cleaning it up properly, so I'm happy to see it's a low number.
And even though we're under budget on that whole project, or as it says it's coming under, I—I just hope that we still are really watching the taxpayers' money. I—I was concerned when I saw groundbreaking T-shirts right away that, you know, are we being fiscally responsible as we should be? And so I'm glad you're asking those questions, Bruce, because those are things I think engineers should catch up front, but—but wasn't done in this scenario, so.
And Bruce knows firsthand, not knowing ahead of time. So any other comments, question? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. A, location change, Las Palmas Restaurant. Board to consider ordinance approving the local liquor commissioner's approval of a change of location requested by Las Palmas Restaurant. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulholland.
To the mayor and village board, Las Palmas is relocating, as Trustee Barry mentioned earlier, from 11—311 West Ogden to 15 East Ogden. This move requires a new liquor license approved by the liquor commissioner. Las Palmas is going to continue to offer video gaming at the new location, and we require that their Class 23 license, in addition to the Class 2 liquor license, will be reissued for the new locations. With me here is Efren Lopez and his family, owners of Las Palmas. I spoke with Efren and their new site. We're looking forward to their relocation. This does not require any action by the board, but the mayor and I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of the move and also aware of the liquor—or the video gaming license. So basically, it's just that you're aware of it. He has indicated his approval issued license, but wanted to hear any case from the board. With that, they are changing their—they're going to have their video gaming as well. They will have a separate room for the video gaming, and they have to reapply to the state as if they were a brand-new business all over again. Not so much with us, but with the state, they will—which they tend to do, and they plan on having six games. And with that, in case, and I also sent you a summary with a floor plan. They will be putting in a patio, outdoor patio area in the front with a walled fencing around it, and I'm looking forward to seeing their opening day. They anticipate to be open sometime around January 15th. So without any further ado, I'll let Efren talk about his moves.
Yeah, thank you. Well, we appreciate your support, and Westmont, we are here, say, about 25 years in the town, and our project is moving from the existing location to the new location, and we need your support.
Well, we're glad you're—
Stay.
Stay.
Thank you very much. We'll do the best we can. We promise.
You know, when we heard of the medical facility, you guys were the biggest concern we heard throughout town, is are we going to keep Las Palmas? And so the whole community wanted you guys to stay, so we're really fortunate that you stayed.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
And the—
Any questions?
Blacktop—you could be able to blacktop your parking lot?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we put it blacktop in the back.
That was a concern, but I'm glad you were able to do it.
Yeah, we—we adding like 25 more new spots in the back.
In the back, good.
Yes.
Any other—
You know, when—when Kathy was running special events, including the 75th anniversary, Alex—
Oh, okay, yeah.
Was very instrumental and very supportive of the things that she was done. They were big—big supporters and big sponsors of the town events back then, so this is a great place, and yeah, we're extremely pleased that you guys are being able to stay in town.
Thank you.
You're some of the good guys.
Thank you, thank you. So far, we don't have any problems.
Oh, no, you do good.
We've celebrated several birthdays at that spot there, and you do a good job.
And good food.
And this license change through the time of the year will be in their 2020 license. They anticipate operating out of their current license to the end of this year, a transition period, so on their new liquor license, it'll just show the address change, and again, the mayor's already indicated he's going to approve.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second to approve. Comments? Anybody in the audience?
Are you still open in your existing location until the end of the year?
Until the end of the year, yeah. 31st going to be the last day, yeah.
And then will you expect—will there be a downtime on the move? Will it be—will you be closed for a certain amount of time?
Well, the developers, they're going to shut down the—the gas and electricity by the 7. We're going to—five days to move it.
So maybe a week or two.
But we're going to start right now to move little things and—
They're targeted to reopen January 15.
Beginning of 15, that's the idea.
Maybe a week or two. I mean, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's good. And the—inside the seating is—is the same? The amount of—
No, less. It's less, less, less.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. We look forward to having a ribbon cutting at the new location.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And you're keeping the Las Palmas combination?
Oh, yeah.
I should have asked that before the vote.
I know what I'm getting when I go in there all the time.
Thank you, thank you. Glad you're staying in town.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Moving on, new business B, an increase in available liquor license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class 23 liquor license by one for Neat Kitchen and Bar, 246 North Cass Avenue. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulholland.
The mayor, with me is John Taylor, one of the two owners of Neat Kitchen and Bar. Neat Kitchen and Bar has applied for a Class 23 video gaming liquor license at 246 North Cass Avenue. They are requesting only four video gaming terminals for use by their customers. Neat has received frequent customers' requests for video gaming. He has been serving alcohol for over 365 days and is eligible to seek a Class 23 license. This will be the only video gaming license issued to the owners. I did a review. I met with John and the other owner, Matt Verdi. They are eligible to receive the license. There's nothing in my reporter review that would prevent them from doing so, and so I will just probably turn it over to John so he can talk and answer any questions from the board.
Just a clarification. They are saying four, but once it's approved, they can go up to six, right?
The state allows them to have as many as six in the area where they want to put the gaming. You should have a report, and there's a diagram on there showing where the video gaming area is. They're only going to be able to fit four in there, so that's why they're going four with an ATM machine. So based on, I think, size limits probably is why you reason for four.
But if they go to six, they don't come back to the board?
They do not. They just go right to the state, but they do have to get past community development, you know, planning and permits and everything, as well as then pay a $25 annual entertainment machine or electrical machine license.
Okay.
And with that, John Taylor, one of the owners of Neat.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. It's nice to—we celebrated our year anniversary, I think it was last Monday, so quite recently, and quite a difference to see some familiar faces in a room, a little bit more comforting than than last time we were up here. So we—we went through the—somebody asked, you know, why—why now? I think like most businesses, we—we get into things, we assess, reassess, evaluate, reevaluate, and in our business, we do this on a regular basis, whether it be something like video gaming or listening to our customers about bringing their favorite sandwich back. We're in the business of serving the customers. We've heard—we went into this and said, no, not—for us. We also said that the prime of Philly wasn't too popular. Turns out it was, and it's back on the menu. So we—we're just looking to provide a service for the community, listening to our customers and adding those things in a tasteful way to reflect, you know, our brand and who we are with those same transitions throughout the business.
Again, I think the only thing I remember is that when you originally was in here, I think you said you weren't going to have video gaming.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So I didn't imagine that. And I know that there's some triggers for some additional work on the building.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Chief, do you want to comment on that real quick?
Thank you, Mayor. Larry Kaufman, the director, in the building, have been in contact with him. He understands that putting video gaming in this situation is going to trigger sprinklers. As the fire chief and past fire chiefs, we can give 36 months for an MOU for him to abide by that. I've agreed to make that happen, and he has agreed that—my understanding is, you're getting ready to possibly purchase this building, so I was in agreeance to 36 months.
Just—to clarify, there is—obviously, there was talks of trying to purchase the building prior to us coming in. Landlord is—is great, good guy, has worked—worked with us. I don't know—I—I can't say I was that happy to present to him because we were putting up a four-foot partition wall that it's triggering a permit, and it's going to trigger a $100,000 project, but I can't—I can't—I can only control so much.
Again, Tom, you want to comment on the—
What John is talking about, we started this with Fremont Grill, and moving forward, we're going to require this of all future liquor license—or video gaming license. No longer the stadium-type roping. This has been—we've had this discussion many a times. The liquor commissioner is now imposing a rule that's going to attach to their liquor license, they have to build a half-wall, and the half-wall has to be a solid wall, not a rope and not, you know, something like that. In talking with John, they already—they already have three parts of the wall. They will put the half-wall, the fourth, and then last partition, so that when you walk in, you're not just, you know, being video gaming as soon as you walk in. They like—they want it to be tasteful, they want it to be appealing.
And you're saying that that—that adding a wall like that is going to trigger the the ay yi yi?
That is not—
Ay yi yi, I mean, you talk about a—
Talk to him.
Wow, wow. And that—and that's been my argument all along on that. That—that is crazy. I mean, to—to put up a wall and have to invest $100,000. I—I mean, I don't know—if we waive that or give him—let him go back to those straps, but—but that seems to be really, really overkill.
And just to be clear, and I apologize, I don't have all the details, but this small half-wall project is not what's triggering the requirement for the sprinklers. It's my understanding—and again, I apologize, I don't have the full history—that improvements were made to that building in the past, and either the owner or a tenant was told that they needed to do sprinklers at that time, and they didn't, and so they were told, the next time you need any sort of a permit to do any sort of an improvement, then we will hold you to this requirement. So this is more of a holdover from a previous requirement than being triggered by the half-wall.
And it's the same owner.
Is it the same property owner?
Yeah, yes. I do remember that—that they did not want to complain.
That's the rest of the story. That's the rest of it.
Sort of. I mean, we didn't—I mean, there was nothing—we went in and did some decor, cosmetic, et cetera. We were going to do something where we were closing off the party room area, and we had a gentleman from, let's see, Larry, I believe, or not.
Larry Kaufman.
Kaufman, yes. Made us aware that if we did this, you're going to have to sprinkle the building. We in turn said, obviously, we're starting off coming into the community, we're not—we're not ready for that project, and we don't want to go with that on landlord, so we stopped that. So it's—it's a little inaccurate, I think, the way that was portrayed, but so we just—we found out what that would happen, what would happen if we continued to put this door up, and we stopped it, so we're a little bit different.
I think it happened prior to you taking ownership.
Okay, oh, I see, I see. Okay, so prior to us coming in.
It wasn't—it wasn't you, but the next—
Next thing that triggers this is what you're doing today.
Got it.
And the owner knew that, and again, I was in agreeance to a 36-month MOU.
Now, I understand. Got it. Which helps you take time to get there. I thought it was something we'd be doing in this construction. Got it, got it, so.
Well, I—
But the basics are, is we're putting up a four-foot partition, and now he has to spend $100,000 to—to sprinkle the building, but—
Would have been cheaper to do it before. I wanted to just comment, you know, I—I don't like the location there, but I love your—your restaurant, your food, so wherever you'd need to put that, I would put it down by 63 and 60 tables down there, because I've been into places where you walk past it, it's a distraction. But the only—you know, the negative thing about the video gaming, to me, is you see people now that they're advertising video gaming, they're not advertising their food.
Yeah.
And your food is second to none, so—
I appreciate that.
Focus on that.
Absolutely. Our focus is on the service and the food, and that is not—not going to sway. We're not going into the casino business. We are still a restaurant business. This is simply just an added bonus for our customers that they've been—they've been asking for.
And in talking with Matt as well, too, one of the questions was advertising. They don't—maybe a light in the window, maybe the A-frame, but the main focus, we talked about ads, not so much for ads, as John just indicated, their main parts can be interior advertisement, advertisement in their business that is available, and you can go a couple feet and have it.
Their focus will—to—to remain tasteful as we—as we think it is right now.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Addington.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made and second to approve the Class 23 comments. Trustee Barry.
Just like to piggyback on what Bruce was saying, now that Las Palmas has left, you guys are really my favorite restaurant, okay? And—and I've told you a lot of times, John, when I see you, Matt does a fantastic job there, community. He's—he's helped us out in rotary, he's helped us out in almost anything we've asked for—for the taste and and cruising nights and everything, and as a neighbor of yours, you guys keep the place clean, and really, the—the food is just excellent. I mean, the—the last place was good. You guys are great, so—
Appreciate that.
Really, really happy that you guys are—
Thanks, Trustee.
Have success there.
Appreciate that.
Top-notch. Any other comments? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
How long do you think the state will take? Have you put an application?
Question mark. I'm not sure how quick they move. I heard this is the, you know, the longest process with you guys, and the state moves pretty quickly. And obviously, the gaming people know ways to push that through pretty quickly, so we anticipate it being done fairly shortly.
Yes, what I heard is right now, the state's anywhere between three to four, that the most six months before the machines are up and running and stuff. And also, there's no problems, and there will be no problems.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to compliment the Fire Department for working with existing businesses and giving those extensions. But I think we really need to be conscious of the new businesses coming in, doing that in the future. Because I think we're going to see some of these that we've given extensions not make the full extension. And so again, for existing businesses, I think that's great. We know that they have the staying power. But these new businesses, I think we maybe need to watch those extensions in the future.
I agree.
Like make them immediate requirements with...
You know, if you don't have the money to be in business and do that, you probably don't have the staying power to have it in 18 months or 20 months or anything, so.
But I think the main dilemma with that is the business is leasing from the landlord, and it's the landlord's responsibility to put sprinklers in, so there's always a give and take, so.
And we want those vacancies filled. I get it, you know, but...
Oh, chief's coming up.
He got us high on...
He's out of uniform.
Hey, he wants to get some face time.
Just real quick is, you know, I did share with Bruce a couple weeks ago, there's truly only about four or five MOUs out there. And I got your message loud and clear, and I agree with you 100% that we're trying not to do that. But, you know, Bruce needed that number also. Those, all MOUs, this would be the first MOU that I'm giving as the new fire chief in the last nine months. The others are for the previous fire chief. But, you know, we certainly can do that. And obviously, we want to bring businesses to town and not kill them in the pocketbook either. But we also have to make sure that the downtown is sprinkled and anything moving forward is sprinkled. That is currently not today.
Definitely a restaurant, so. All right. Moving on. C, property tax levy. Board to consider ordinance adopting the 2018 tax levy ordinance in the amount of $9,110,449. Finance Director Parker.
So this is just a continuation of the process that we started a couple of meetings ago when we had the aggregate property tax levy and established that. And this is just... Goes on with this as the next step, where we levy the tax. Then the county will get back to us with information around March or so to let us know what the rate will actually be. And we'll be including the figures of what we actually receive from the county in our budget.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero?
Motion made and second to approve. Comments? Anybody in the audience? Anybody from the library? Nobody? Seeing none, I ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D. This is an annual event, too. Abatement of taxes. Board to consider ordinance abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year 2019 to pay debt service on general obligation bonds, which are the alternate revenue source, Series 2013A. It's general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2013B. Also, general obligation bonds, which is also alternate revenue source, Series 2017. And general obligation bonds, which are also alternate revenue, Series 2019A. And finally, it's general obligation bonds, which alternate revenue source, Series 2019B of the Village of Westmont. Now, I'd ask Finance Director Parker to give a little bit more information.
This is, as the mayor mentioned, another annual process. As we adopt bonds and issue bonds, excuse me, as we issue bonds, the village sets a property tax, saying that if we don't have enough money to cover it from these other sources, it would go on the property taxes. Each year, we then let the county know we have enough money to cover it from these other sources, so it does not need to go on the property taxes, and that's what this ordinance is doing.
And traditionally, when we went out for bid on bonds, the alternate usually carries a better rate, a better rate for us.
Right, so as long as the people who are buying the bonds know if we don't have enough money, where we think we'll have the money, we can still get it in property taxes. Because they know that, and that's additional guarantee, they're willing to charge us a little bit less in interest.
Yeah.
A little less risky.
Do I have a motion to...
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little?
Motion made and second. On the question, on the comment, nobody? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes.